All right, we are so excited for you guys to be here. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We got a lot to do and many of us have to be at the senior center between 10:30 and 11:00 for an event they're having and so we're gonna go ahead and get going. We're gonna call Rodney Pierce to lead us in the invocation.
I'm not the sheriff. The sheriff had to step out. I will never be the sheriff, so let's go to the Lord in prayer. God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet and gather. Father, we just pray your Spirit will guide this meeting and these discussions. Father, we thank you for this board that's committed themselves to just serve in this community. Father, we thank you for each individual here. We pray that you'll guide us and bless us for us in your holy name, we pray, the Lord Jesus. Amen.
We'll add a little street cred to that for those that see this outside of this. Rodney's the associate pastor at Bear Creek Baptist Church, which is a wonderful church here in Davie County. Suzanne gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your command, in which there is liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Suzanne. All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Finney makes that motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Renninger, seconds. All in favor, uplifted hand. All right. Now we'll go Ms. Robin.
So now we are a quarter of the way through the year. So we'll be talking about the September financial summary for the general fund. So this is what we look like a quarter of the way through the year. Property taxes, as you know, will level out the closer we get to the January due date. As you remember, last year we had an almost 99% collection rate, hard to obtain and hard to maintain, but tax collections are pretty much on par. We're about $283,000 higher than we were at this point last year. Our revenues, the main difference is that we had our vehicle financing in September of this year. It was a bit later in the year last year, so you see that in the miscellaneous line of $976,000 difference. And expenditures, the main difference is just our contribution difference to the capital projects fund. So right now we are $733,000 better than we were at this point last year. Our next slide shows the general fund revenues. The blue bar is the current fiscal year, the yellow line is last fiscal year, and the green line is the previous fiscal year. So as you can see, we're doing well in property taxes. Next month will be the first month of sales tax that relates to this year. And month by month, we're still trending a slight increase over where we have been in previous fiscal years. So hopefully we can still see a slight increase. Some of the larger counties are seeing it being flat to a decrease. So it's not going gangbusters the way it was, it's sort of leveling out. And the other revenues are pretty much on par and it's kind of just timing differences throughout the year. So let me know if you have any questions.
Did you say sales tax?
Yes, sales tax.
Okay. Sales taxes like some counties seem to be like going down, but we appear to be.
We appear to be flat to be a little bit higher, but you know, a lot of that's due to, you know, consumer spending and the COVID times were crazy high. Inflation has a lot to do with it. If you're paying a higher price at the store, you're gonna pay more sales tax on that. It's sort of starting to flatten, so you know, we didn't project it to go up a whole lot, but we're still seeing a slight increase.
Very good, very good. Any other questions for Ms. Robin? All right. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Next, Rodney Pierce.
Thank y'all for allowing me to be up here. I wanna do a short presentation on a project that we've been working on in our center. I wanna thank also Technology Solutions, John Gallimore. He's been instrumental in helping implement this. So we've been working on a CAD-to-CAD project. So what is CAD? It's computer aided dispatch, computer assisted dispatch. It is the primary tool that we use in our profession. We can't do our job without a CAD. We would be back to pencil, paper, and maps on a wall. So it is the computer software used by 911 to assist the citizens and the responders. It is our fire truck. It is our police car, so to speak. So we can agree too, that nowadays with modern technology, that things just don't stop at the county line or by jurisdictions. Emergencies don't always adhere to those boundaries. With mobile technology comes the challenge of mobile responses. So what CAD-to-CAD allows us is interoperability. So what this system does is our CAD system would be connected by a hub to another agency's CAD system. So it allows us to request, receive resources from another jurisdiction without the need of placing time-consuming phone calls. So if, for example, CAD A on your screen was another agency's CAD system, if they had entered a call or need assistance from Davie County, they would enter it in their CAD system, in their software, what they're used to, but it would be converted to our software, for example, on CAD B, and it would show up on our screen like it was our call with all the information that would be added to that call instantaneously. So with that sharing, anything updated also, that that 911 center updates on that call would be updated on our CAD screen too, for us and the responders that go out. It also establishes continuity. So with our 911 center, if it by chance loses phone capabilities in the center we're connected to or have this agreement with, CAD-to-CAD will allow that rollover county to actually create a CAD call and it would be displayed up on our screen. So it would eliminate the use of phone calls or radio communications back and forth. So that would be an essential advantage of this as well. So the process is pretty simple. It's connected by a cloud hub and so when an agency needs a Davie response, they would put that on their CAD system and it would show up in our CAD system or vice versa, if we need that other agency's mutual aid or needed response. Cybersecurity is a big issue nowadays. It does meet all criminal justice information system security measures. It's CGS compliant. Our Technology Solutions is the one that's gonna be managing the actual network connection, the network security, and the configuration of the firewalls and ports. So it is done in-house. So those security measures will be vetted by our county standards, which our Technology Solutions Department does, as you're all aware, a great job in ensuring those security measures. So funding. This is grant funded. We were awarded a grant in 2024, this past August, of $37,860 from the 911 board to implement this project, to start it off. And any additional future costs are also covered from the wireless surcharge fund. So this is state funded. It's not coming from any of the county's general fund to do this. And how will it improve our services? So once implemented with all the adjoining agencies is the plan, to get all of our connecting counties on board with this, it will eliminate valuable time that a 911 telecommunicator dispatcher has to call each individual county requesting services, such as out-of-county EMS coverages. When all ambulances are committed or out of service, we have to automatically call each individual county around us and request those services. So that's five phone calls. So a dispatcher is calling each individual county, they're on the phone, and then we're tying up that other center as well to request those services. And think about it, if all EMS units are committed in our county, we're busy too in the communication center. So this will alleviate the need from those phone calls. It will, we could put that call, the unit we need, or that center we need on the CAD and it would show up in their center as well. Mutual aid assistance for fire services. A lot of our fire departments in the county have automatic responses from adjacent counties. Reed's in Davidson County comes in automatically for Fork on certain calls, Clemmons in Forsyth County for Smith Grove, Franklin and Woodleaf in Rowan County, they come in on certain type of calls for Jerusalem and Colommy, and Forbush comes in from Yacken County to Farmington. So if they had a call and we placed the unit specific we need from them, it would show up in the adjacent county's call and not necessarily need us to call them. The information.
We dispatch them ourselves though, right? When they're mutual aid, when you send out the tones, you drop their tones too.
Not necessarily. We don't have the tones for Reed or Woodleaf and that, so.
Most of them.
Yeah. So the CAD would generate the pages on their phones and their network as well, not just the radio information. And also for law enforcement, for the needed mutual aid requests such as chases or searches or warrant service. So in essence, this will free the 911 dispatcher or telecommunicator to focus on the current situation at hand and cut down on some of the phone traffic we deal with. This is already in place in several agencies in the state, Cary Police Department and Raleigh Police Department. They've been live with it. Pitt County's live with it. Wilson County, Chatham County is in the progress of it, process of it. New Hanover County, Brunswick, Robeson, Lumberton, and Rowan County are all coming on board with this system as well.
So then, so then in regards to what you were saying earlier about agreements then, the only adjacent county you would have then is Rowan at this point?
At this point, yes. Starting out, we gotta start with somebody. And Rowan is our primary rollover in case our system busies out or time's out. So that's why we're starting with Rowan. And the plan in the future is to bring on the adjacent counties to us to get everybody on board with the system.
Rodney. I mean, at least in following the timeline, how new is, how new is this in the context of other people should be rolling in, or has this been going on for several years or?
I wouldn't say several years. It's not completely new. CAD-to-CAD has been an allowable product for quite a while. It's just involved as other markets have now taken over it. Other companies such as Central Square that we use have bought out smaller companies and now they implement this product on a larger scale. And I'll say too, as this happens with the, this is kind of an evolution of the 911 system in our state. The EZNet, which connects all 911 centers now, allows us to transfer any 911 call into the state to another agency. So allowing us to actually add a CAD call to these 911 calls is just kind of a continuation of that step of allowing the 911 transfers. Does that make sense?
And those, the EZNet you're talking about, it's not dependent on phone?
No, it's IP-based. It is. The EZNet is the phone system that connects us. So if we go down, all I have to do is just pick up the state. Like we just signed the mutual aid with Columbus County, the last meeting, and I could tell the state, hey, Davie County's down, can you route our calls to Columbus County? And then they could pick them up. And if Columbus County had that system as they were fielding their calls and our network was up, we could still field these calls from here without the need of radio and phone service. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you get a call transferred from CAD-to-CAD, is there some type of unmissable notification that's gonna come up on your screen?
Yeah.
Because if we are busy, it may be easy.
No, it is just like we have to do the SSD transports now. Those calls are pre-scheduled and put into the CAD system. So when those calls are ready to be dispatched, they automatically populate on our screen. If a unit is not assigned to that call in a particular amount of time, it will alarm or alert in the CAD, in the comm room, and it'll be in a notification saying, hey, this call needs to be addressed. So it's not like it's gonna disappear and fall through the cracks.
And on the, like calling out-of-county EMS, if their counties don't participate in this program and the computers notifying them, how are you gonna be, how are you gonna have verification that they received that notification?
It would still be by phone call or radio until we get everybody on board.
So if they never join, the only person you can do this with is Rowan?
Right. Yes. This is a video of Cary PD and how they've utilized it. Cary PD in essence is more of a secondary 911 center. In the town of Cary, they dispatch all police department and fire department, but if they need an EMS unit to come into their town, they have to call Wake County. And this is an explanation of how this has actually improved their services because it eliminated the phone calls or the radio traffic.
Walmart hates when you do this, but they can't do a damn thing about it. There's this new battery operated power washer.
We provide dispatch services for Cary Police, Cary Fire, Marshall Fire, Marshall Police Department, and Apex Fire.
We were on HTE CAD before and we had just simply outgrown HTE CAD. The department had gotten too big. They literally had stretched the HTE CAD as far as they could stretch it for us.
What led us to Central Square in the first place was the CAD, but then we had the CAD-to-CAD software that we are currently, just recently implemented. So that implementation there has really helped us out as far as our interoperability with neighboring agencies.
Before we had the CAD-to-CAD, every call for EMS, for instance, is dispatched by the county. We take the calls and process them, but EMS actually is dispatched by Raleigh-Wake Communications. So we would actually call them on the radio to give them the call. That's, you know, anywhere from 30 to 60 second process to do that. With the CAD-to-CAD, as soon as we enter it in our system, it immediately shares over and drops that from a 30 second to about a one second process.
All that information that we're gathering, you know, medical information that is gonna help the responders, is information that we had to provide over the radio where now we don't have to do that. So it's very, very quick. It cuts down our response time, EMS response time, cuts down first responder, mutual aid response times dramatically. So it's a lot of help for us.
When an emergency responder's taking in a call, there's multiple things that they're having to think about during that time. Seeing safety for the person, seeing safety for the responders, the exact need, are there things happening in the background of the call? There's multiple areas that they're having to focus on. By not having to worry about having one more communication piece outside of, when the system's able to maintain and handle that quickly by transferring it, it allows one less thing on the dispatcher, helping lower stress for the communicators, allowing them to be more focused, detail oriented, on more specific tasks dealing with the call rather than the overall response.
We have a dispatcher whose primary role is giving calls to Raleigh over there at radio. It has basically freed up that position to reallocate to other duties within the center. So we've, by having the CAD-to-CAD, basically gained an employee in some ways.
I believe we've had roughly 700 calls transferred into us since we've gone live through the portal and approximately 1,000 that we sent over in data packages. That allows us to cut down that radio time that we would've spent and that conversational piece between two dispatchers.
So I would say we're probably saving about a minute response time for EMS people. We have a very good relationship with Central Square. I'm thankful for that. They're responsive and, you know, we enjoy working with them.
They've not dropped off at all. I mean, they're still dedicated to trying to find the best solution for the problems that we have. They're working all the time. I've gotten calls from them early in the morning till late at night. So they're really always, always working on, always thinking about it.
So that's kinda how Cary Police has initiated this. So just in general, closing benefits, it saves time when requesting needed resources. All information is instantly shared and ensures continuity in critical times. It assists in ISO points for the fire department. It is counted as a checkoff box for them. And again, there's no added cost for the county, especially from the general fund. It's completely funded by the state. So that's kinda just in general, the closing presentation of it, so.
Any questions? I have a question. The list you put up of the users was, I don't know, seven or eight counties. Is everyone going to this or?
It's probably a case-by-case basis. It is significantly growing within the county, especially now that almost all agencies, with the exception of one, I think, are not on the EZNet, the 911 system in the state. So it's definitely something that would be considered evolving through the state. It's kinda like the next process to ensure continuity throughout the state with our 911 services.
It might depend on each individual during.
It does.
Opinion of whether or not they think it's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Then you're also depending on someone you did not train to gather the information and share with you, so.
Right. And it comes in too, like our next, the next person I would like to talk to is Iredale County because of, for example, Sheffield and County Line. They have jurisdiction in Iredale County. So if Iredale and us were on this same platform, if there was a need for County Line or Sheffield, that call would instantaneously show up on our CAD system. And so that would eliminate a phone call that they're supposed to contact us with, but we don't always get that phone call because their agency is always busy to notify us that they need Sheffield or County Line responding. So it's just an added tool in the toolbox is really what it is. It's not a primary tool, but it will be another tool to help us mitigate our jobs.
But you don't see, I mean, you don't see any drawback with using that even if others don't.
Correct.
That's the thing. If there's no drop-off, you know, it's not like.
Well, but it's taking up funding. I mean, even though it might not become, what are we gonna miss buying because we're using that state money for this instead of something else?
It's allocated for that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not gonna implement that. The grant is solely for that purpose, to start us off, and then it would be just no different than the added cost of our CAD system we pay for now, so.
If the other counties don't join, it'll just be there. It won't be utilized.
Would the approximate cost to the other counties be the same?
They would come on as a.
If it's a software, in other words, the revenue base in Iredale County is significant, but it seems to me that the positive interaction, if the cost is relatively the same and it's paid for by grants, doesn't, seems like it would be something everybody would want.
Yeah, there's, the cost after implementation is just a license fee requirement, just like you buy laptops and you wanna add Microsoft to each one, each one you would pay a license fee to add each one. So that's the cost involved to the company that the state would cover from each other agency if we chose to go that path. So, like I said, I mean, it's not, it would never be a primary tool, but it would be another tool in our toolbox, so to speak, that we could use just to make things a little more easier and streamlined.
Well, their indication was it reduced response time a minute.
Yeah.
In the context they were talking about, seemed like it'd be, especially rural, like County Line and Sheffield, it'd be a big help.
Yeah, 'cause if you look at it, what they're talking about is that when they had to take a call, they had to put all that information in their CAD system, and then they had to radio Raleigh or Wake, wait for them to answer, and then they had to give everything that they just said, everything they just took in that call, over the radio. Now, what they put in that computer system was instantaneously shared with Raleigh or Wake, so the dispatcher on the other end just looked at the call and said, oh, okay, they need this EMS unit to go to this call. And it was done and it showed up on both sides. So the agency that gave them the call could actually see the unit was placed on the call, could see the unit was responding. And so, yeah, it's two-sided. It's like, it's like a, you know, two-sided windows, not a mirror. It's a window. You can look through and see both sides of it.
Have you done any research to show how many times you could've used this in the, like, the past year?
No, not necessarily researches. I know it would be beneficial, especially with our out-of-county move-ups that we have to do. Like I said, individually, when those happen, we are calling each surrounding county. So that would at least eliminate having the need to call Rowan. We would put the unit that we need for them on there or the special code we create to notify Rowan and then, you know, it would only leave us calling the four other counties to help us with that, so.
There again, if the other counties don't sign up, we're not, it's not gonna save that much time, so we're, and they may never sign up or they may sign up tomorrow, so.
Yeah, well, it's definitely, it is a very open discussion with other 911 centers because we all see the benefits of it, to eliminate that traffic, to ease everybody's job, so to speak.
Just one other quick question in regards to the out-years. They're paying the grants to get, to initiate this. What do you estimate the cost to the taxpayers of Davie County in the out-years after the grant funding goes away?
The grants to start up, the initial license to carry on is covered from the wireless surcharge. So even the carry-on license comes from the actual state funds. It doesn't come from the general county fund.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not coming out of the general fund at all.
Right, but that relates back to the question Benita asked earlier about allocating funds for this and the out-years that could be used for something, something else. Do you have any idea what the cost in the out-years would be to the 911 fund?
Not necessarily because that's more of a lump. Like we submit our reimbursement each year and it's taken from that, and if we need to increase, we request for an increase because of the systems we're using. So that's kinda where that's at.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I'd.
Yeah, please.
So when you do send that notification to Rowan County that we need their units to stand by, do you get an answer?
Yes, yeah.
Do you know that they received that?
Yeah. We would see that on the side of the CAD and obviously there would be protocol measures put in place once it's implemented. Like we were not just plugging in between the two agencies and look at it. There has to be a build session to, the administrators on each side to build things out, so it's seamless and we have protocols in place, so nothing does, 'cause that would be very bad.
Anything else?
I would like to say it's always good when you can enhance services for our people without increasing cost.
Yeah, agreed.
All right. Thanks Rodney. Appreciate you. Paul? Paul Moore, gonna talk about the recreation and parks rental policy.
Appreciate the time to present this to you folks. This has been a long process for our staff and our advisory board. Let's kinda give you a quick overview of what that looked like. So we started in July looking at a full-fledged rental policy that will set the stage for rentals from now and in the future. That's gone through three-month process between staff, looking at the rental classifications. Then once we wrote the policy, had it dialed in as much as we could, went through then an advisory board subcommittee that really did a crucial and critical review, came back, made some changes, and then at this month's advisory board meeting, did a presentation to the full advisory board and they have unanimously recommended this to move forward. Also in the process, has gone through county legal looking at the policy to make sure things are tidied up with that respect. So without further ado, just wanna run through this as quick as possible, give you guys some time. So again, purpose of the policy to set that clear expectations between us and the rental, and the renter or renters. So we basically have five intentional categories when it comes to the types of rentals. We have general, athletic, special event, splash pad, and dog park. All rental categories have their own specifications along with the general rental specs. So no matter if you are an organization looking to rent our stadium, or you're a venue looking at doing a community-wide special event, they have their own specs as well as following the general rental compliance standards there. Once adopted, the webpage will transition to a new accessible look. It has a lot of our features on it already with regards to things that you can find, but we're gonna tidy that up. So we're always looking at one, two, three clicks to get to where you need to be, to find the information at the tip of your fingers, whether, how much does it cost to rent the field or the amphitheater? What are the ordinances I need to follow by? You know, if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at having a wedding reception and I wanna serve alcohol, what is the alcohol policy? It's gonna be right at their fingertips with the easy one, two, three click process. The rental process for each category is described in the simplest of terminologies that we could. There were some things that we had in there that were, that our subcommittee looked at and said, hey, some of these folks may not understand that terminology, let's break it down even further. So we've done that. Damage deposits, again, we go into what constitutes paying in full, how can they make a payment towards their rental policy, when do things have to be due by? How can they po- how can they make a payment towards their rental policy? When do things have to be due by? Damage deposits and rental fees are clearly delineated as a set transparency and no confusion with what constitutes a confirmed or permitted rental. Your certificate of liability insurance, that is another key piece that is, is descriptive and, and specific. This section typically see, will see, may see future changes because we take these things on a case-by-case basis, depending on what, again, there's that defined line of what is community-wide and what is not community-wide. Words matter, and for this reason, the certificate of liability requirements are dependent upon category size and the rental activities that are involved. We've added a section here called additional fees. This is in our current fee schedule. Every one of these checkmarks are additional fees that a renter could look at, and they can find those specific fee costs of what they are. But they identify various options for the prospective renter to reduce Q and A on, on our end, so they can find it and not have to ask more questions than they need to. Compliance. Compliance is descriptive and specific. This section will see, will typically see future additions and changes or deletions as the, as our agency encounters, again, various types of, of rentals. So, again, when it comes to compliance, whether you, each, each rental category has its own compliance section, so they have to follow that compliance along with the general rental compliance, which is detailed in the policy. Again, you got decorations, cleaning, approval of permits, some of your legal regulations that are in ordinances, but we wanted to find them here, motorized vehicles on the property, cancellations, refunds, and refunds in general, set acknowledgement, expectation, and the purpose between the county and renter, renter or renters. There are exceptions. When we talk about cancellations due to death or trauma to an immediate family member, one of the, one of the great questions that our full advisory board ask is, are we gonna require a death certificate? If somebody calls and, hey, I need to cancel, when it comes to refund policy, we're not gonna require that. The, the, the family has more to deal with than for us to get them a, a death certificate or a rental refund. That's a simple, hey, call, uh, call us, hey, send it to us in a quick email that you need to cancel due to, hey, my mother's passed away, and that is good enough for us. Going into the second session, or the second piece, athletic rentals. Again, it has its own rental process. When you go to our website, you'll be able to, you'll be able to find out, okay, hey, I want an athletic rental, and you'll be able to go to that, that application quickly, so that is to waste less time for, for the, for the prospective rental. With this, with this section, you have the facilities available. They specify the rental process, the, the, the availability for the classification. Here, we talk about field preparation. That's for the ball field, or the meadow, or our stadium rental. Additional need requirements and per- and permits are dialed in. So, you know, hey, we have a lot of, we, we took our most common things that we see for these types of rentals. So day before setups, how much time do we get, what about concession rights, what about gating admissions? Hey, I need the press box, or hey, I only need the shot clock, what can I use? Or I only need the scoreboard, how does that work? Or hey, I only need lights for a practice. Those are spelled out. Naturally, when it comes to athletic rentals, when we're looking at games, things that are a little more traverse, we have emergency personnel and law enforcement, how that details emphasizes the potential EMS and law enforcement requirements. Again, each section has its own certificate of liability insurance is required for these categories, especially if they're having community-wide events. They should know the pitfalls and things that could happen during games. We, we, we have to require, and especially if they're taking gate fee where there's money being transacted between, it's for their protection, not only ours. Additional compliance is also covered in addition to the general rental compliance. So again, talks a little bit more in detail about what, what the compliance standards are for athletic rentals. In this section, while athletic and special event rentals are primarily hosted outdoors, inclement weather can be a factor to which the policy clearly addresses here, how they, how they should monitor those situations, and if they need to cancel for, for, for reasons due to inclement weather. Then going into special events, again, there's a rental process, how you can find, get to those pages, what facilities are available. The event components, here we have, with special events, you get events with alcohol. You'll notice that wasn't on athletics. That was specific, and due to the alcohol policy, we didn't want alcohol events on our, for athletic type of special events. Again, we get a lot of day before setups. We have concession rights, gating admission with some of our special events. Even stadium lights are on there. We have sound requirements, the press box usage for those, sometimes for special events, so we had to add, add it in there. How to access electrical panels for amphitheaters are also in there, so just additional compliance standards. Attainment merchants permit, again, if we have a function that wants to, or selling items like craft shows or other functions, they gotta have this per North Carolina, or per Davie County codes as an attainable merchants permit, which they get at the sheriff's department. Again, when it comes to the classification, if it's a community-wide event, what are the emergency personnel and law enforcement responsibilities, and how they go about getting those officers? And these are the requirements, we, these are the standards that we use as our own agency. One officer minimum requirement, two officer requirement, three or more officer requirement, and so forth. And really, at the end of the day, depending on the renter, the law, law enforcement personnel or law, the Davie County Sheriff's Office determine the exact number of officers that they, they need.
Ho- ho- hold it.
Yes.
A second.
Sure.
You, we kinda rolled through that one, just a, just a scenario.
Sure.
You have someone renting your baseball field for tournament purposes, okay? They're gonna probably have more than 400 folks on a, on a Saturday. So you're going to require the, whoever the promoter or director is of that tournament to have police?
If they are taking gate fee, if there's money being transaction, transacted for any gate fee, yes. However, if it's, if it's a single promoter tournament, one, one games, and it's, and it's for, it's based upon, for example, if there are eight games, and you're gonna have 400 people throughout those eight games, it's sporadic. It's at one time. These are, these are, these numbers are due to one time, so if you've got 400 at one time there. So with tournaments, you're gonna have, you could have 150 at game, you may have 200, which doesn't fall in that requirement.
Did that say more than 400, or 400 or less?
It's 400 or less.
So.
Let me get down to it. Let me get back down to it, cuz I went back up to, I went back up to athletic.
Yeah, you, you just skipped it over it. That, 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 the only thing I say there is that, you know, that adds significant cost to the folks who are utilizing the, the facility.
And it does, and those, and when it comes to athletics, it's case, it's, it's also case-by-case basis as well. So we have to, we have to navigate, we have to set a standard, but it's still, we, we have to go on a case-by-case basis.
Now, that right there doesn't state the ticket sale thing. Is it above that, or is it not in this particular paragraph?
Not in this particular paragraph, no, cuz this is, this is under special events. This is special events. This is not athletics. That's why it's specifically not under athletics. This is under special.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks, Paul.
But if they're taking, but it only applies if they're receiving a gate fee during this events as well?
May not, not necessarily. It really depends on, for example, if we have an event in which activities, in which there are activities or other sales that may, may have a requirement there too.
So then what, I guess what do you apply though with the 400 or less? What kind of thresholds, or what kind of event? I mean, like, if I took that and read that literally, I would have to, if I, if my event fell under this category, if I had 50 people there, I would have to have an officer.
Cuz it says will require, not may require, not up for discussion. It says will require.
Community-wide special event. If it's a private event, that's a different story. Community-wide, we have to protect ourselves and our organization, cuz really, what we don't know, we don't know what we don't know, right? So if somebody's put in on a community-wide special event.
But there again, you said it might depend, or it may depend, but that says will require.
Will require for, for community-wide.
You need whatever you mean is what it needs to say.
Community-wide special events, community-wide special events will require, yeah. And that could be changed too, and that, we, we can add that as a requ- as, as an additional piece on here for community-wide special events. But again, case-by-case basis, we have to, we have to look at each, each renter, rental to know. And if we have a question about it, we'll, we'll call our contacts with the sheriff's department and say, hey, here's what we have. Here's the, here's the special event permit application. Here's what they're having. Here's our policy. What else would you may recommend?
But Paul, if it's case-by-case, then you're, then that needs to say that. Is that, what you're saying and what is written is not the same. I mean, if it's, if they have to discuss it with you, then, because otherwise, they're just gonna read that and probably go, well, I'm not doing that. I mean, if, if it, if it's up for discussion, then that needs to be made known.
All right. We'll make that, we'll make that note and, and look at it.
And that would be determined kinda based on the, what the applicant thought their attendance to be.
Or what they're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, if you got, if you got a, a function that's gonna have, I, I just throw some hypothetical out there, they're gonna have some activities, and one of those is axe throwing. You know, you never know what's gonna come across in a special event permit application. That's why our permit of ac- our per- our special event permit application is quite extensive now. It's, we need to know, we need to know exactly what's going on. And it's not just, it's not us being, it's not us, for us being tedious. We need to know that that person who's putting on, one, understands their own liabilities as well as us. You know, if they're on our property, if they're on county property, and they're doing these functions, if they don't have their process and protocols in place, and something were to happen, and WSOTV comes around, they're gonna ask, hey, what's their permit allow them to do? What's your policy allow them to do? If we don't have our ducks in a row from that standpoint, it could hurt our organization, which is something that we don't wanna do.
Well, and you may want to continue for it to be will require, but, but if it is, then don't say it's case-by-case if it's not gonna be case-by-case. I mean, maybe you, you wanna stick to how it's written.
And, and you bring up a good point, Benita. One of the things that even our staff got into discussion, and our subcommittee got into discussion, more of the subcommittee, was we're, we're always thinking about what is a burden to the taxpayer, okay? When it comes to these costs, I mean, naturally, we're recouping costs, but we also have to think of what's too much of a burden. That's why they're very in tune to our fee schedule, and they want it simplified as much as possible every year. If we make changes, does this, what are the intended and unintended consequences of making changes?
So, just a real quick question, Paul, in regards to this. This is only for special community events. In other words, if Carol, Truist, the soccer folks, Carolina University with lacrosse, and i- if they, if they rent the stadium or the baseball field, this does not apply to those events.
This does not apply unless they're taking, unless they're taking gate fees, unless they're taking, if there's money transacting hands, we want to make sure that they're, they're being safe. Because we've, there's been so many situations we've seen out there in which somebody has come and taken the gate box and just ran off, so it's just a hypothetical scenario. But also, when it comes to, you notice it says EMS and law enforcement. So having the EMS personnel there may be, may be a, a requirement that they will wanna look at. I mean, what do you do if somebody out there just all of a sudden is playing and falls over, and you don't have EMS personnel out there? What can I look to their own organization, as well as what is, how's that look on us if it's not defined in a policy?
So we stopped you. Is that in here as well? Cuz I don't remember you saying that EMS was required.
Emergency personnel and law enforcement. It was responsibility of the renters to understand, be fully aware of the potential risks associated with public and private special events, even in the.
And/or.
And, and/or private special events, yes.
No, it says and/or, it says emergency service and/or law enforcement. So is it and/or, or is it and?
Paul, let's, we don't wanna get too tedious with you here. Brian, do we have a copy of this?
Yes.
You should have a copy.
We have a copy of this, and we're going to approve this at our November meeting.
You have the option to approve it at the November meeting. If you still have questions, this is something that we could push.
But we can look at it between now and then. We don't need to, we don't need to.
If there are questions, please, please get it to me, cuz I do have the authority with the advisory board that if we need cha- if we have changes outside of this meeting, we can do that, and, and they're okay with that moving forward.
Very good, very good.
Okay.
I don't wanna restrict questions, but the, some of it, we just need to read the context of the whole document.
That's fine. That's what it's for.
Yeah, and if you have any particular wording that you want us to review or look at or consider changing, if you would get it to, you could, you could send it to Karen or me or Paul, and we will get it out to everybody to take a look at. I do, however, have to remind you all that you have another engagement this morning. So, but yes, we'll, we can make any changes as needed before November 5th.
Yep, and we're almost done.
All right.
Almost done here. So again, there's the inclement weather policy as part of the special event, what, what constitutes, hey, thunder, lightning, how they cease or cancel. We have even the extreme weather conditions that are on there for the safety of people. Splash pad add-ons and exclusive rentals, so there's a clear process described for securing either option. So you got a rental process plus the add-on, and then you have a process for exclusive rental. Disclaimers, there's a disclaimer pro- process on here. This is crucial for us. The disclaimer set the expectation of playtime is one hour with a potential of two hours, which has always been the case at the splash pad, you know? You pay, you, you have a two-hour time slot. However, the only refunds are given if you do not get at least one hour of, of pad time. So that's part of the rental process, add-on or exclusive as well. And then lastly on this, there's crucial compliance on here, as well as an awareness, especially when it comes to sunscreen. And I'll, I'll make this statement here. It, it's part of our first bullet point for parents, grandparents, camp counselors. You would be absolutely horrified to know what's in our spray sunscreen now, and had the hardiness of what those sprays can have on skin. But also, not just to the skin, but go, going through our recirculating system. So we have signage up. We try to make parents and camp counselors aware, don't come to the pad. Please come, go ahead and spray your children at home or at, or at your facility. Let it have time to soak in before you get out on the pad, because if you spray or lather down your child, and they immediately get in the water, 90% of what you just put on goes right into our circulating system, 90%. Every bottle, no matter whether it's lotion or spray sunscreen, has a disclaimer that says, please apply for 10 to 15 minutes before getting in the water. And that's one of the reasons why. Again, having clear, we have learned over the last three or four years what rules and compliance we need to add in here. It's very clear. Dog park rentals, what the rental process is, it's under general rentals, what facilities available. Again, there's a compliance with it, with it too, as well as parking, signage, and what is the leave no trace law. and what is the leave-no-trace, uh, law, or not really a law, but a policy, um, leave it as you find it. And then finally, policy acknowledgements, uh, are in there so that when, uh, any renter looks to rent our facilities, they'll have to see this policy, and they'll have to check and sign off on the policy as well. All right, uh, that's all I have. Uh, please do send us, uh, your questions, or if you have, uh, heartburn on a specific section, if you've got some language that you may want us to look at changing, please get, get that to us, and, um, we'll make changes as necessary. Thank you much.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, pending items?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will be brief. Um, you see here that you have minutes from the October seventh meeting, uh, today's meeting, and our closed session on the seventh. We are looking at adopting the North Carolina Fire Code. Um, according to the fire marshal, this is, uh, the best practice instead, or we would have to create our own fire code. Uh, we are looking to create our ag center building advisory committee, uh, through adoption of you all. We are looking to, uh, delete some assets from the sheriff's office. And then you will see a list of appointments and reappointments to various boards and commissions that you all have appointing authority over. Uh, remember that November is our big month for our veterans, so we are implementing, uh, Operation Green Light again this year in Davie County. And then you will have your standard tax information from the tax office. And then lastly, uh, not on this list, but I just want to let you know that we have prepared, and are, are looking to bring to you a budget amendment that will enact, uh, in-house mowing and lawn care moving forward, if that is something you still want to consider. So we have that prepared, uh, we can keep it on the agenda, we can push it back, or we can have further discussions, but we do have that ready to go, if that's something you still wish for us to do. And then finally, just to remind everybody, early voting is in place, uh, as of yesterday in Davie County. Um, I wish I knew our total number of registered voters, but when you think about the town's overall population, we have had just shy of ten thousand people participate in early vote. Um, so, early vote is open until November second. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, what, what time are we, what's our?
We're supposed to be there at ten.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, all right. We're going to, um, real quickly, does anybody have anything we, we, that want to, uh, add to this agenda? That, just right off the top of your head, for the November meeting? If, 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 if you do want to add something, get to Brian, okay? Uh, I tell you what we will do, we're going to forego commissioner's comments, y'all have heard from us, we appreciate you. Uh, and, um, we're glad you were here. Is there anything we're missing? Now, there were several things that we wanted to, to talk about here, um, uh, in, in terms of discussion items, but we just, unfortunately, we're not going to have time this morning. Uh, we'll get, we'll get with the staff on that prior to, uh, the November meeting. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have, uh, Mr. Poindexter seconds, all in favor? Okay, we stand adjourned, thank you.